I would like to call the city council meeting of August 19, 2014 to order. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Here.
Patty.
Here.
Kenneth.
Here.
Schottmeyer.
Here.
Adam.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Marsh.
Here.
Mayor Jordan.
Here. Would you join me in reciting the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business is the quarterly financial report, second quarter 2014, by Paul Becker. Thank you, Paul.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is for the second quarter, ending June 30 of 2014. What I'd report is that revenues and expenditures are just about where we expected them to be on our own projection. Look at the general fund. The general fund is short expenditures over revenues by about $800,000. But remember, I'll call your attention that we did, in fact, purchase Mount Kessler, which was a million and a half. So we're just about where we expected to be, 51 percent of the revenues are in, 50 percent of the projected expenditures have been made. As far as the enterprise funds, recycle and trash collection, and the water and sewer fund, again, we're just about where we expected to be as far as revenue expectations and expenditures are. In those two funds, expenditures are running a little bit behind revenues, but remember, we have some long-term capital improvement projects going forward, so that'll catch up by the end of the year. As far as the park development fund, street fund, they're all in about the position I would expect them to be. In the airport, fuel sales are a little soft, but that'll be offset because as fuel sales are soft, also the requirement to buy fuel to sell to the public is also reduced. So my report is that right now, we're about on track. We look like where we had forecasted. We'll take the position, and that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
What questions do we have for Paul on the financial report? I didn't think so. Thank you all for coming to hear Paul's financial report. Oh, you're still here. Next is the consent agenda. Number one is the approval of the August 5, 2014, city council meeting minutes. Number two, Evans Construction and Remodeling LLC, 898 South Hill Avenue. A resolution to authorize a contract with Evans Construction and Remodeling LLC in the amount of $39,765 for community development block grant rehabilitation of an eligible residence located 898 South Hill Avenue. Number three, Justice Assistance and State Drug Crime Enforcement Grant. A resolution accepting the 2014-2015 Justice Assistance and State Drug Crime Enforcement Grant for federal and state funding in the amounts of $73,705.16 and $111,529.83, respectively, as a portion of the funding for the Forts Judicial District Drug Task Force. Number four, B&amp;H Photo Video. A resolution to award bid number 14-44 and authorize the purchase of components for a location, production, and system from B&amp;H Photo Video Corporation in the amount of $26,971.13 for use by the Media Services Division. Number five, McClellan Consulting Engineers, Zion Road. A resolution to authorize an amendment to the contract with McClellan Consulting Engineers, Incorporated, in the amount not to exceed $90,610, to provide for design and related services for Santa Sewer relocation and improvements along a portion of Zion Road, and to approve a budget adjustment. Number six, John Stalling Studio, art sculpture at the Marion Orton Recycling Drop-Off Center. A resolution to authorize a contract with John Stalling Studio in the amount of $9,400 for an art sculpture to be installed at the Marion Orton Recycling Drop-Off Center, and to approve a budget adjustment. Number seven, Civic Plus Website Design. A resolution to authorize a contract with Icon Enterprises, Incorporated, doing business as Civic Plus, in the amount of $65,714, plus applicable taxes for city website and internet redesign and hosting, and to approve a project contingency in the amount of $6,571. Number eight, New World Systems, data sharing software modular. A resolution to authorize an amendment to the contract with New World Systems in the amount of $23,980, plus applicable sales tax, for the addition of data sharing software modular to the existing police department records management system, and to authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with the cities of Rogers and Bentonville regarding the sharing of police records. Number nine, bid number 14-43, Benchmark Construction. A resolution to award bid number 14-43 and to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Benchmark Construction of Northwest Arkansas, Incorporated, in the amount of $42,879.48 for the replacement of the driveway at fire station number one, and to approve a project contingency of $8,575. And, let's see, and number 10, Master Street Plan Amendment. Resolution amending the master street plan by removing the internal collector streets that were planned in the South Pass RPZ DO-8-2898, and downgrading Inger Road from a collector to a local street from the intersection of Plummer Rosa Road South to the Mount Kessler area, as described and depicted in the attached map. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to accept the consent agenda as read. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Patty.
Yes.
Kenneth.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay. Under unfinished business, number one, enact-
Mayor, were you gonna move the gully park?
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Yes, I apologize. I've been asked to move the purchase of gully land purchase. Number five, resolution to approve the attached offer and acceptance contract in which the city agrees to purchase about 11 acres of land, including two houses and any outbuildings from Mary L. Dunn, for the amount of $1,101,000, to authorize Mayor Jordan to sign all necessary documents for this purchase, and to approve the attached budget adjustment. I will entertain a motion to move that to, in front of new business. Oh, unfinished business, I'm sorry.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to move item five, gully land purchase, to just before unfinished business. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Patty.
Yes.
Kenneth.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay. I've read the resolution, and Connie, do you have this out?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thanks for putting this on the agenda and for moving it up for us tonight. As you know, the city has been very fortunate this year to have recently acquired Mount Kessler for preservation, and now we have the opportunity to expand Gully Park. The land north of Gully has been owned by the Dunn family for a number of years, and they've always envisioned that becoming an expansion of the park. When they decided to sell the land, they thought of the city first and contacted us to see if we were interested, and we, like the Dunn family, have also envisioned that land becoming an extension of Gully Park. Preservation of green space, the opportunity for that to happen doesn't come around very often, especially in the core of the city center. So it raised a lot of interest in the public when it was offered for sale, and a group of interested citizens were very dedicated and immediately started raising funds for the purchase. Friends of Gully Park, very involved, a dedicated group of citizens formed to begin raising money. They've raised over $30,000 already and continue to raise funds for that purchase. After conversations with the Dunn's, the city obtained an appraisal for the property. The appraisal came back, said the land was worth $970,000. The city was able to negotiate an acceptable offer, which includes purchasing the land for 1.1 million. 970 of that, which is the appraised value, would be paid for by the city, and the Fayetteville Natural Heritage Association has pledged to raise the remaining $130,000 for that purchase. The approval of this land will affect the proposed capital improvement plan for parks and recreation. The city's portion of the 1.1 million would come from $700,000 in the 2015 capital plan that is currently slated for Gully Park improvements, the trail lights, and additional parking. That project would be deferred into the next five-year CIP cycle. The 270,000 park development funds in the 2016 capital plan, that would come from a project that is proposed for Wilson Park improvements, which would go towards the Rock House renovations of restrooms and the playground. The city does anticipate selling the two houses, and then those funds would be used to backfill that 2016 project, so they would be used to go ahead and move forward with the Wilson project. Additionally, if the purchase is approved, we will host public meetings to gather input for what that land would ultimately be used for. And I would like to thank Wade Colwell, Fayetteville Natural Heritage Association, the Friends of Gully Park, and all of the efforts that they have put into this for us to be able to get this far and bring a proposal to you guys. With that, I'll try to answer any questions you guys might have.
Justin, you want to add something?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Can you remind the public what the appraised value is? I know we won't know till we sell those houses, but can you give the public the appraised value of what those houses were appraised at?
Um, yes. About $330,000.
So we are hoping to use that money to go back into, you know, what we've spent on it. I think that's important for people to know. So thank you very much. And I just want to say real quick, I appreciate everybody moving this up. The family has been very generous in taking their time to letting us get our situation together to make this happen. There were a lot of people that wanted this land, and the family thought that it was best to go to the city, and I couldn't agree more. Not just from an East Fayetteville resident, but for, I think, all residents. I think Gully Park is a treasure, and I think it will only make it better. And truly, once this land is gone, it was never coming back. So the fact that we have this opportunity and that family was nice enough to work with us, I think is important for us to pass this tonight so that they can move on. I mean, they've done their part, now I think that we need to do ours. So I hope that the council will agree with me on that.
What other questions do we have from the council on this?
And I have one other comment, sorry. And I've talked to a few people over there that were part of a couple of groups to get attention to this, back when we didn't know where the land was going to go, and they have said that they will participate in these planning sessions after the land is purchased, and possibly see the communities come together and maybe do some of the work that was slated to be paid for, you know, cleaning out the creek, maybe working on some of the land. I think we're gonna see the community do that themselves, because they think it's a good partnership between the city to do what we're doing, but they understand that we're taking money away from repairs and improvements, so hopefully they can do that. So thank you for having those sessions, and I hope we publicize them and make sure that they know when to come and where to come, and I think it'll be a really good thing. So thank you very much.
What other questions, comments do we have in the council on this? Okay, what public comment do we have on this? Okay, seeing-
Hello.
Okay. Ah, sorry.
Hello. My name is Ben Putman, and I live at 353 Rolston Avenue. Myself, along with the gentleman sitting down here on the floor beside me, have formed the Friends of Gully Park to advocate the purchase of this land by the city, and we appreciate, first of all, you taking the time to address this issue tonight. I realize there are a lot of people here for the financial report, and so I appreciate you squeezing us in. I just want to say, I'm a lifelong resident of Fayetteville, Arkansas. I've got my undergrad degree here, and I'm currently pursuing my masters. I grew up a few hundred feet from Gully Park, so it means a lot to me. I spoke with Mr. Dunn personally while he was alive, and I know that it would mean a lot to him to have this piece of land acquired by the city. Also, would like to remind Mr. Mayor and the council of the number-one guiding principle of Fayetteville's vision for 2020, which is a naturally beautiful city, our mountains, our hills, our creeks, and our open green spaces. This is one of the largest open green spaces in the center of town. 10 percent of the population lives within this city, and I think, as we have all decided, that preserving this would be a great thing. We've also seen financial contributions from private citizens to help make this happen. We crowdfunded some of this money. We saw donations as little as $4 from college students like myself, who really want to see this happen, donations all the way up into the thousands of dollars, as well as a Facebook community of almost 300 and well over 100 individuals donating. So I'll end it there. I know Max and Bob and Wade would like to speak briefly as well, and I know there's obviously something else going on, so I appreciate your time. And if I may, I have a small document for each of you. Would it be all right if I presented that?
Certainly. Pass it to the city clerk. Thank you.
My name is Max Mahler. I am also a resident of East Fayetteville. My address is 2408 North Robin Road. I recently purchased my house by Gully Park, because I love Gully Park, as a citizen, and having grown up here, I learned to ride a bicycle in Gully Park as a kid. Really, the only thing that I wanted to say was how impressed and how empowered this whole crowd, between the crowdfunding and working with everyone, has really made me feel. It's been pretty incredible to see the support, to really create this with everyone and what's happened at Friends of Gully Park. And I think that not only am I dedicated to this, but I'm also dedicated to see it all the way through, as long as I'm a resident. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Wade Colwell, Fayetteville resident, and I just came from a meeting with two gentlemen that came by my office this afternoon, much like Ben and Max, they grew up in Fayetteville, grew up plain in Gully Park, and they just came to the office, and they've agreed to do a $35,000 mashing grant. And this is ongoing. It's been amazing, as Max said, the support that we've got in this park. When we started it back in 1989, it's affected a lot of lives, and appreciate your consideration.
Bob Cork with the Fayetteville Natural Heritage Association, and in keeping with true confessions, I did not, was not born and raised in Fayetteville. I didn't move here till 2000. In 2007, when the Fayetteville Natural Heritage Association was raising money for Mount Sequoia, we had an opportunity to save a piece of land, a piece of green space, in the center of an urban area. Everything came together at once. It was on one of our maps as a high priority piece of property. It was up for sale, and we had a champion, Hugh Kincaid, that was interested and willing to lead it. And there was a few of you that were here at that time for that meeting, that thing. Now, we're in 2014, and we're raising money for Kessler Mountain, but another opportunity has presented itself, and this time, it is the Gully Park expansion. Again, the Gully Park is on an enduring green network corridor that's very important, the Neokaska Creek-Mud Creek link going from east to west. It's a very important hub, and as the city continues to grow and as the trails continue to be built out, Gully Park is gonna become a more important, more heavily-used area than it is today, and it is one of our more heavily-used open spaces today. In addition, we also have a champion again that came forward, the Friends of Gully Park and the Cow Patty Foundation over here, that were speaking to you already, and you've seen the kind of things that they've been able to accomplish already. With that in mind, the Fayetteville Natural Heritage Association has once again made a pledge of $130,000 to make up the difference between the 970 and the 1.1 million, because we feel that being able to save an enduring green network feature in an urban setting is really something that has to be done on an opportunistic basis. Everything has to come together. And in this case, we have all the elements of success. Park's staff and Park's advisory board is in favor of it. We have the champions that I mentioned, and as you can see by their success in fundraising already, we have the community's success or support that's necessary to make this thing work. And so we feel very good about our pledge. And with that, I thank you for considering this this evening, and all of us will be glad to answer questions.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else?
I'm David Mixon. I'm involved with the transaction as Mrs. Dunn's broker, and I can't repeat anything else that these folks have already said, other than the fact that I would like the council to know that we have had four offers on the property, and she has tabled all four because she wants the city to have it so dearly. So that's where the family's coming from. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the council. What's the wishes, council?
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, this to me just feels like one of those wonderful Mount Kessler minutes, you know, the absolute high of my seven and a half years of serving on this fabulous council. You know, when the folks first started talking to me about this, Wade Colwell, Bob Cork, I thought, where is that money gonna come from? Just like I did with Kessler. It happened. I am so happy to be a part of Fayetteville, where we see that we have to seize opportunities when they're there, you know? This property's gone, it's gone. So I am so excited, and I will strongly be supporting the purchase of this acreage. Thank you.
Okay. Who else? Sarah.
I think this is a great opportunity as well. I do feel like we're rushing into it a little quickly. I understand that there's a tight timeframe on the part of the owners of the property. So I've also gotten a lot of emails, in addition to wanting to expand the park, but from citizens who are asking for splash pads, and also from citizens who would like to see more infill development in that area. And I'm just wondering, if we do move forward with this, I know that we do plan to sell the two houses, is there anything that would keep us from being able to sell a slightly larger portion of it in order to generate the funds to maybe build that splash pad or take care of the, kind of offset some of the other maintenance costs that we're making sure that we're addressing those? And, you know, I don't know that that's something that we need to necessarily do, but is it an option that would exist? Are we being, would we be prohibited from doing that? You know, I think to the process that we're using on the Tyson site, where we did a lot of community input sessions and identified what the neighborhood wanted to see there, and then we're going to be sending out a request for proposals and looking for development that fits that public benefit, you know, and maybe this is an opportunity where we can build housing geared towards seniors, which is something that I think would be really good for this area, so when young families take the kids to the park, they also get to see grandma. So I just want to make sure that we're not ruling out possibilities in our rush to take advantage of this opportunity.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
To the park staff, you were talking about input sessions. So you don't have a definite plan for this land. It's mainly get it first and then come up with a plan, right?
Correct.
So couldn't her idea be part of that process? And, I mean, we'll have input sessions from whoever wants to input, right?
Right. Yeah, be open to the public, and that could certainly be part of the discussion.
Okay, I just want to make sure that by accepting the money from all these groups that are pledging to help, that we're not tying our hands, and just keeping open the possibilities so that as we rush into this, we're not closing any doors.
I don't think that money that they're giving you is earmarked for a certain, like, it doesn't, you don't cash a check unless something happens, right? I mean, it's, we need to get the land first.
Right. Mm-hmm. And then, you know, through the approval of the five-year CIP, you guys are gonna be discussing that later, so, okay.
We've been working on this, I mean, we've been working on this several months, and we've come to, we've made an offer, and I'm bringing it to you all, and I'm gonna leave it up to you how long you want to wait, but we've made the offer, and I think-
I think getting the land is important.
I think we need to, I personally think we need to move it along, but if you all want to wait.
I'd like to move it along, just so long as we're not tying our hands by doing that. But I think that this is a really good opportunity, that we should keep our, keep an open mind to what the possibilities for this land are.
Okay. Okay.
I think that's a good point. If there's no other comments, I'd like to move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Is there any other comments from the council? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Patty.
Yes.
Kenneth.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Now, under unfinished business. Number one, enact Chapter 119 Civil Rights Administration, in ordinance to amend the Fayetteville Code by enacting Chapter 119 Civil Rights Administration to protect the civil rights of Fayetteville citizens and visitors, and to create the position of civil rights administrator for the city of Fayetteville. I'll entertain a motion to go to the third and final reading.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Patty.
Yes.
Kenneth.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Yes. In ordinance to amend the Fayetteville Code by enacting Chapter 119 Civil Rights Administration to protect the civil rights of Fayetteville citizens and visitors, and to create the position of civil rights administrator for the city of Fayetteville. Hang on just a minute. Could I ask you all to close the door, please? Come on in, folks. I want to be sure everybody gets to hear.
Ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything we can do so that people in the hallway can hear? They can't, I'm getting messages that they can't hear.
Do we not have speakers set up in the hallway out there?
We have the speakers that are outside, which are at maximum volume, and then Room 111 and the lobby downstairs.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right. On the third and final reading, Councilmember Patty, would you like to start us off?
Certainly. Mayor, at this time, you want me to talk about the amendments, or you want me to let you explain that first?
I do. I do. What I would like to do-
You pull his mic down.
What I would like to do tonight, since I'll be running this meeting, is that we, this, I want to put all the amendments together, and everybody speaks on the amendments only. Has everybody got that? Has everybody got that? Okay. Okay, we're gonna put all the amendments together, and then we're gonna vote on the amendments, and I'll take public comments only on the amendments, and then we will take public comment on the ordinance in its entirety. Has everybody got that? Oh, good. All right. So I will entertain, right now, at this time, the city council, is there any amendments that the council would like to put on this ordinance?
Mayor, I have one.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got one too, so.
Okay.
I would like to thank everybody for showing up tonight. I know that this is, I know that this is an issue that inspires a lot of passion among all people. I know that sometimes that passion can get away from us, but before I really start with my comments, I want to ask everybody, on behalf of our city, on behalf of our community, to please remember that we're all human, and that we all wonder about the same things. We all ask ourselves the same question, like, how did I get here, or how can I be a good person? And that's something every one of us holds in common, every one of us, no matter what our personal opinions are about this law. And I can't underscore that commonality enough, and I would just really like to make it, state very plainly, ask very plainly, that I think the most important thing for this meeting tonight is that people don't name names, don't point fingers, don't question each other's integrity. I think there's a way to speak- I think there's a way to speak in a civil manner that allows us to maintain our togetherness as a community, and so, I just ask you to please honor that. And if you're so inclined, reinforce that when you come to the microphone. So, I would like to offer two amendments, and, you know, I, we've heard a lot of concerns, and some of these, I do genuinely believe that some of them have been raised in good faith, and that's why I want to offer these amendments. So, I want to offer two amendments. I offered an amendment last time that exempted church sanctuaries and chapels, and we heard that that wasn't enough, and so, I want to expand that exemption. I want to expand that exemption to all tax-exempt property owned by the church, or in general, a place of worship, to cover churches that may rent their facilities, okay? So, that's the expansion. I am under no illusion that this is going to please everyone in terms of the entire ordinance, or that this is going to fix other problems that, or other concerns that people have about the ordinance, but I wanted to offer that expansion, that expansion of that religious exemption in good faith. And so, this would expand it from merely chapels and sanctuaries to all tax-exempt property or place of worship. Those are the operative words.
Is that a motion?
Well, he's, he has another amendment. Do you?
Yes, I do. And the reason I'm bringing that forward is because I, there's a, some misconceptions about the ordinance that pastors or churches may be required to provide services that are against their religious beliefs, or open their church buildings up to groups with practices against their religious beliefs, and I want to make this ordinance absolutely clear that that will not be required. That's what this amendment does. The second amendment that I want to offer, we've heard a lot of claims that this ordinance will be used as a defense for sexual crimes. First, I have to say that that's not true. And before I explain this amendment, I'd like to ask the city attorney, please, you wrote a memo to this effect about what the current language says. I was hoping briefly if you could explain that this ordinance couldn't be used as that sort of defense.
Well, on August 15th, I did write to the mayor and the city council a memo to explain what, I believe there were some misconceptions out there. And the first thing that you need to know about is, in fact, that state law is always more important and will trump and control over any city ordinance. So, if there's any conflict, the state law controls. And at this point in time, there are two state laws that might have some application if someone who was inappropriate was attempting to go into a bathroom, or a locker room, or a dressing room for the wrong gender. That one is indecent exposure is one of the two state statutes, and probably the one that would be more often used would be disorderly conduct. Both of these are state statutes. I cited them in my memo to you, and talked about how, what would be required to approve them, and especially in disorderly conduct, it can occur if a person, quote, recklessly creates a risk of public inconvenience, annoyance, or alarm, if he or she in a public place exposes his or her private parts. We've spoken also to the police chief, and he had no doubt that, in fact, if someone of the incorrect gender tried to go into a bathroom, and it wasn't just a mistake or something, but if somebody went into the bathroom, that they would, I think, in fact, be arrested, and I'd ask the chief maybe if he wants to, I think the chief is here somewhere, to talk about what the real-world reaction would be on that, not some hypothetical thing, but what would actually happen in the real world. Chief, there he is.
Well, I think really all I can say is I agree with what Kit said. I do believe, depending on the exact circumstances of the particular incident, that person would be served to be arrested for disorderly conduct and possibly even indecent exposure, like I said, depending on the specific details of the incident.
Thanks, chief. And that's certainly my interpretation also, and I think would be the interpretation of the city prosecutor who works in my department. I don't actually see this as likely to occur very often, but as we know, disorderly conduct and indecent exposure is one of the most commonly charged crimes in the United States, and so, it will continue to occur whether or not we pass this ordinance. But this ordinance would not be a shield for someone who tries to say, well, you can't arrest me for that because I've got this ordinance. State law will not affect it by our ordinance, and so, that could not happen. And as you remember, in that memo, I did suggest that even though that is correct, it might be better for the city council to adopt an amendment just to make it crystal clear that, in fact, this ordinance has no intent to allow that kind of behavior, and I think that was what your second amendment was.
Yes, and so, I'll explain that now. The second amendment is intended to make that crystal clear. This says two things. The first is that it says, nothing in this ordinance shall be construed as allowing any person to enter any gender segregated space for any unlawful purpose. So, it cannot be used explicitly as a defense. It also says, because we've heard that, some misconceptions from folks, that this ordinance, they believe, would force them to put their male and female restrooms together. That is also not correct, but we want to make that absolutely crystal clear, and so, this amendment also says that designating a facility as a gender segregated space shall not be a violation of this ordinance. So, it does those two things for clarity's sake. And should I make a motion at this time?
Yes, I do think even though you've explained these, and you did read the second one, you need to read the first one verbatim so that it was in the record.
And then we get a second, and a second on the second one.
I would move to make these two amendments. These are both in section 11907. The first amendment would be to strike paragraph I and replace it with the following, "Nothing in this chapter shall be construed to require any religious or denominational institution or association to open its tax-exempt property or place of worship to any individual or group for any ceremony or meeting, except for any activity or service that is supported in whole or part by public funds."
We have a second on that.
Second. Second.
All right. Those two are amendments. I'll call them one and two. We will vote on them each individually and take public comment from all at one time, okay? After we've got them finished. Is there any other amendments?
I have an amendment.
Yes.
I'll pass those three that way, and these five that way.
Okay.
And actually, Kit, do you want to read it first, or do you want me to talk about it first?
Why don't you introduce it, and then I can read what you're exonerating.
Okay. Um, I'll introduce it, and then if you could read it, and then I'll give my reasons for it. Is that okay? Thank you. My amendment is basically to, at the end of the day, send this to the public for a vote. There's several reasons, which I will get into later, but I believe that by adding this to the ordinance itself, whatever final ordinance that we come up with after amendments, moving it to the public in the general election is the right thing to do. But I'll let Kit, if you would please, sir, you can read it.
And this would actually be substituting for the current enacting ordinance, which would enact the code section into the Fayetteville Code and change it instead into a referral ordinance.
But, Kit, let me ask you something. Would you have to vote on the first one before, or how would you do that? How would you replace one for the other?
Okay, you would amend the first one, and it'd be replaced by this one if that passes.
Okay.
And then, this would be the ordinance, that would be the operative ordinance.
Okay.
And it reads, it's entitled, and I'm going to read it because there is substantial changes from the enacting ordinance, and I felt I should read that. "In ordinance to refer the proposed chapter 119 Civil Rights Administration to the Fayetteville voters for their determination whether to enact chapter 119 Civil Rights Administration to protect the civil rights of Fayetteville citizens and visitors and to create the position of civil rights administrator for the city of Fayetteville. Whereas the city of Fayetteville seeks to protect and safeguard the right and opportunity of all persons to be free from unfair discrimination based upon real or perceived race, ethnicity, national origin, age, gender, gender identity, gender expression, familial status, marital status, socioeconomic background, religion, sexual orientation, disability, and veteran status, and whereas the city of Fayetteville seeks to promote the public health and welfare of all persons who live or work in the city of Fayetteville, and to ensure that all persons within the city have equal access to employment, housing, and public accommodations, and whereas the Fayetteville City Council has determined that the Fayetteville voters should have an opportunity to vote to decide whether or not the proposed Civil Rights Administration chapter should be enacted into the Fayetteville Code. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one. At the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby refers chapter 119 Civil Rights Administration of the Fayetteville Code as shown in exhibit A of this ordinance to the Fayetteville voters in the general election to be held on November 4th, 2014. Section two. Now the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby determines that if the voters fail to approve the referendum called by this ordinance, the proposed chapter 119 Civil Rights Administration will not be enacted into the Fayetteville Code. But if the voters approve the referendum, then chapter 119 Civil Rights Administration shall be enacted into the Fayetteville Code and will become effective 60 days after the approving election."
Thank you very much, Kit. Can I comment?
You may.
So, there's several, there's three reasons mainly that I came to this decision to try to put this amendment together. And the first one is the overwhelming response that I have gotten from this ordinance on both sides, those for it and those against it. It's, it's been a huge vision into the people of this city when I saw that most of them, actually, an overwhelming majority of Fayetteville people don't want to discriminate, and they don't want the negativity that comes with that, and they really like some of the parts of this ordinance, but some of them have problems with other parts of the ordinance. And I think with the thousands of emails and the hundreds and hundreds of phone calls that I've gotten, I think that the people have spoken, at least to me, from both sides that say, we want our voices heard, regardless of how they're going to vote. I've seen polls conducted that show support for this. I've seen polls that show not support for this, and I've seen all points in between from the conversations that I've had from people. And so, I think the best thing about tonight is we will amend this to whatever final document, final ordinance that we have, and we hand that to the people in the general election. Now, what is our responsibility as a city council, is one question I ask myself, because I think there is the question that, well, isn't this our responsibility? And an overwhelming majority of the time, it is. I've never had anything happen on this council where our decision wasn't, I think, justified to make the decision and move forward. But in this particular case, you've got a massive amount of people who wish their voices to be heard, again, from both sides. And I've had people for the last several weeks, or last couple of weeks, say, if we voted on it today as a city, what do you think would happen? And I honestly cannot tell them. And that's another reason we should do it. It gives people several months to look at the final ordinance, have discussion, debate. What we also saw after the meeting two weeks ago was people, there was a blog written about it, that people that expected to be fighting outside because they were on two separate sides of the fence when they were in here, went out and ended up having conversations about it, understanding about it. So, it was, that's an amazing thing to me. And I've always believed we don't own, at the end of the day, the democratic process. That belongs to you. And for me to even say the words, we are now giving you the right to vote, kind of bothers me, because it's, that's yours, not, it doesn't belong to me. But in this particular case, we would have to give it to you. And the other reason is, you can also take it. You can also take your right to vote, no matter what we do tonight. And I know that there is a movement out there already to get a citizen petition together if we pass this and don't send it to the voters, to get this on an election at a separate time. Now, I called the county clerk and said, if we pass this tonight, which we would have to pass this ordinance as a council tonight, no matter what final documentation we have, we would pass it, pass it on to you, as the city attorney said. And I think that's fully our responsibility, to give you the complete look at what it is you're voting for. And I think we need to do that every time, but certainly this time. And I feel like the compassion of Fayetteville is absolutely true and real, and we just need to give people a chance to show that. And, you know, I've, I've heard people say, well, we'll, we'll take it to our own election if you don't do that. Well, the problem is, there's not very much time. If we pass this tonight and move it on to the voters, it will meet the November 4th election, because the city clerk has about a week to move this ordinance on to the county clerk, who will put it on the November 4th general ballot. But let's say we don't let you have your right to vote. Let's say we decide that that is not your right, it's ours. Then, if the citizens wanted to, they could get 4,096 signatures, correct me if I'm wrong, Sandra, which is a certain percentage of the last mayoral election, and if they get 4,096 registered Fayetteville voters to sign a petition, we legally, we would, as a city council, have to honor that for a special election, because she would have to, and when I say she, Sandra and her office would have to manually go through each and every name and verify that they are Fayetteville registered voters, and that would take a very, very long time. So, I doubt that people could get those signatures together and get it to Sandra and her, count all those signatures, or verify them, and get it to the county clerk by the 26th, I believe it is, of this month. So, we would miss the election, but we would still have to have an election, because 4,096 residents want an election. And a special election would cost, correct me if I'm wrong, $25,000 to $30,000.
Yes, sir.
Which we would have to do. I would rather not spend $25,000 or $30,000 of the public's money when we could move this forward to the general election and probably increase voter turnout, which is always a good thing. I'm always amazed at the low turnout for votes, so maybe this would increase it, and that's a good thing with all the other stuff going on in the election. So, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of little reasons, but that's the big reasons. I just, I've seen so much from this city over the last few weeks, and I, I believe in this city more than ever. You know, the mayor has said many times in between the, you know, don't you love this city, and the cheerleading, and he's our biggest supporter as people. And he said several times, this is a partnership. This city is a partnership, the partnership between the people and the government. It's open, it's honest, and it's a partnership. I know no better partnership than for us as elected officials to listen to our constituents, come up here, have hours and hours of meetings, put a document together that we believe is the one that the public should vote on. I believe that is fully our responsibility here, and I believe that the people will, will debate this, they will see it, they will read it, and they will vote on it. And I just, I think it would mean a lot for us right now to make a stand and say, we don't own this process, you do, but we're doing our due diligence and doing what we're supposed to do, which is give you the documentation and everything to make your decision to vote. So, that's why I want this on the general election.
Okay. What other, what other comments do we have on that?
And I believe that the people will debate this, they will see it, they will read it, and they will vote on it. And I just, I think it would mean a lot for us right now to make a stand and say, "We don't own this process, you do, but we're doing our due diligence and doing what we're supposed to do, which is give you the documentation and everything to make your decision to vote." So that's why I want this on the general election.
Okay. What other comments do we have on that?
There would need to be a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have a motion and second to put this ordinance in place of the other, to put it to a vote of the people.
Yes.
And just to be sure, at the end of tonight, when we got the ordinance, we would vote on the ordinance, we would have to approve the ordinance, and then it would be enacted.
We can, we can get it to the county clerk in time enough to meet the general election if it's passed tonight.
If we approve it tonight. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes. Okay. Who wants to start on, oh, is there any other amendments? I'm sorry.
Did we get a second?
Yes.
Yes, we did. Okay. Yes, Al.
I just have a couple of questions, but I don't know, is this a good time to ask?
Well, it's y'all's time right now before I turn to a public comment.
I haven't really heard clarification, but I've gotten a lot of emails. If this position were to pass tonight, or if it were to pass in the general election, what department, I know we've talked about who would do this, and we don't know, but what department would be...
Speaking to the microphone.
Okay. So we've had a lot of questions about who would do this, and I know we can't answer that yet because we don't know what the job responsibilities are. But what department would this fit under? Do you know?
I do not.
Okay. All right. That's one of the, a lot of the questions.
Tomorrow, I'm going to Jonesboro, and I won't be back until Friday afternoon. Monday morning, I will start to sit down with staff, and we'll decide, depending on what happens here tonight and what is passed, we will try and make a determination where it goes.
Okay. The other question I have is, this is, and a lot of constituents have written about this, this is more of a legal position. And I've done a little bit of research, and a lot of times, this is under the city attorney's office. And currently, we have it under the mayor's office. And I just wanted to kind of have some clarification on why this would be under the executive branch instead of the legislature, or the judicial branch.
Well, I think the reason for that primarily is that I have a very small department. The city prosecutor is in my department, so there might be a perceived conflict of interest if my department was initially investigating in it and then sending items down to the city prosecutor. People might feel like he would not be able to use his full discretion on it. The mayor has obviously virtually all the other employees, except for some that work for the city clerk and some for the judge, that are both elected. And so I think it's quite appropriate for this to be something done by the administration. It is simply an administrative duty. No legal duties in here. There's no analysis of whether or not someone has a cause of action or anything like that. They're just looking about whether or not the ordinance itself has been violated. We have code compliance and many other sorts of divisions that do that kind of work, planning. So that kind of work about whether or not ordinances are being followed or not is often done, and primarily done really by the administration. And so that's why it is located in the general administration for the mayor to decide.
That answered my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Anything? All righty then. We're gonna take public comment. Now, here's some rules for everybody. They will be strictly enforced tonight. The first thing that we're going to do, we're gonna take comments from Fayetteville residents first. Then everybody from out of town can speak after that. Does anybody on the council disagree with that? Okay. Everybody gets one turn at the microphone. When you come to the microphone, give us your name and your address. Now, that means you have to be a resident in the city to speak first. All right. Keep your remarks to me, the chair. Don't engage another council member. I do not want to hear any attacks on council members' character tonight. That's not going to occur. We're gonna be courteous to one another in both directions, from the public to the council and the council to the public, okay? All right.
And people need to speak up. People can't hear outside, and I keep asking that. If you would ask people to...
Okay. I can't talk any louder than I'm talking right now. Can you all hear me? Yeah, I bet you can hear me.
Hand out there.
Okay.
Thank you.
When you come to the microphone, do not engage someone else from the public in the audience. I'm not gonna allow that to occur. Okay. I don't want to hear any more hand clapping. That went through, I mean, that hand clapping and cheering and jeers and boos, I don't want to hear that tonight. We're gonna be courteous here tonight. Now, I will strictly enforce that. Okay. All the amendments, I've already said, you can address any of these amendments, all three. Everybody gets one turn at the microphone, and we're gonna hear from everybody tonight if we're here all night. Okay? All right. Now, once we get through the amendments, we're gonna go to the ordinance as a whole, and then you'll get to speak again. Fayetteville residents first. And please don't say, "I've got a business, I'm doing this, I'm doing..." I want Fayetteville residents first. I will strictly enforce that. And then we will talk about the ordinance as a whole. Lastly, well, not lastly, but the next thing, I want you to be as brief as you can. Let's not be repetitious. I mean, once it's been said, let's not keep going over the same turd over and over and over. If you've got something new, step to the microphone, speak it forward, and be brief. And then, once the vote's taken, I don't want a bunch of folks crowding up here. We've got other business to do in this city council meeting. Now, has everybody got that?
Yes.
All right. Now, if I have to say, I want you to stay on topic, too. I don't want you wandering all over the place. If you want to talk about the amendments, I'm good. Don't get into the ordinance till we get to the ordinance as a whole. I'm gonna keep you on topic. All right? I'm gonna ask you, if you get off, I'm gonna say, "Please stay on topic. If you keep going on, I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up." I don't have to do that. I want everybody to get along, be courteous to one another. You can disagree and be courteous to one another, right? Mm-hmm. Okay. Now, who would like to be first tonight? Yes, please, come to the microphone.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Ann Shelley. My address is 774 South Cherry Lane in Fayetteville. I am a proud resident of V Ward 1. And I stand here before you to speak to the amendments that Mr. Petty has passed specific, or has requested specifically Amendment 2, and also to Mr. Tennant's amendment. Though I do represent myself as a resident of the city, I am also here in my capacity as Executive Director of the Northwest Arkansas Rape Crisis Center. And I support Mr. Petty's Amendment 2 in that the spirit of it was to clarify some drastic and...
Excuse me a minute, Ann.
Yes.
Y'all, I can hear somebody back there, back in the line of notice. We can't hear up here. Let's keep it.
There's a cameraman.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Petty's Amendment 2, in my opinion, is to address some very sad misinformation that's out in the community about sexual violence and the misinformation that the restroom issue would increase that in our community. So I'm grateful for his efforts in Amendment 2 to make that more clear. And I do want to address, I stand here very humbly and with a lot of compassion to represent all the sexual assault survivors in this room, in our community, and the ones that I deal with in person every day here in Northwest Arkansas, out of our office here in Fayetteville. Just so you know, in the last, just in the summer months, we've performed 24 rape hit exams on sexual assault survivors here in our community. We see over 800 individual contacts through groups and individual counseling and advocacy every year. I can't speak to their personal stories, but I will say that the statistics that I am very aware of with regard to this issue hold true for us here in Northwest Arkansas and in Fayetteville, my hometown. And those statistics are, and it's important for me to say that, that 75 to 90% of adult sexual assault survivors or victims of sexual violence, sorry, are perpetrated by people that they already know, by acquaintances, family members, friends. The fact of a stranger walking into anywhere, especially a public restroom, is very, very small. And I also stand before you as a survivor of childhood sexual assault myself to say that those statistics are 95% for childhood sexual assault survivors who are perpetrated by people that they know and acquaintances. Very few are the circumstances that have been brought forth and for which Mr. Petty's trying to address in Amendment 2. Those are simply just not true. And it saddens me both personally, as a resident of Fayetteville, and in the work that I do, that that kind of misinformation and fear tactics would be brought into an issue that's so important. I'm sorry, misinformation.
Stay.
I appreciate that. Misinformation. And when it comes specifically to lesbian, gay, and transgender and bisexual adult survivors, the statistics are even more harrowing. And I want to speak to those because I believe that the dialogue that's happened because of this bathroom issue have brought those into the forefront. I was invited this July to the Arkansas Crime Victims Assistance Academy to speak specifically on lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender sexual assault victims. And also, I've been in a room this full of people who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender, talking specifically about that issue. So I know, right here in Arkansas, these statistics are true. That lesbian and bisexual women are victimized at a rate almost twice of straight or heterosexual women. Gay and bisexual men are victimized at a rate of 10 times greater than heterosexual men. It's estimated that 55%, 55% of transgendered men have been sexually assaulted at least once in their life compared to only 17% of non-transgendered men. 68% of transgendered women have been sexually assaulted at least once in their life compared to only about 33% of non-transgendered women. And this is a very important statistic. LGBT people, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender people are more likely to be assaulted by strangers, more likely to be assaulted by strangers than straight and non-transgendered citizens of our city, Fayetteville, Arkansas. So I commend Mr. Petty for trying to right the misinformation by amending this important ordinance. I also ask that the amendment that Mr. Tennant has put forth does not pass. My fear is that if this is immediately sent to a vote, that this misinformation that Mr. Petty is trying to address will only become more prevalent in our community and that concern and fear for sexual assault survivors will be misguided. And I would love for the community to give that much effort and energy to supporting our true survivors here in Northwest Arkansas who need a meeting room this full. So I want to say that. And in closing, I would say, we have a quote that we use every day in our work. It's from Norman Rice, and he said, "Dare to reach your hand into the darkness to pull another hand into the light." I do that every day in my work. I do that every day here in Fayetteville. I ask no more of you all than what I would do myself. And this ordinance does put your hand into the darkness and pulls so many hands into the light. I thank you for considering this amendment, and I ask that you vote down Mr. Tennant's amendment.
Can I ask her a question?
Yes, you may.
First of all, thank you very, very much for what you do, and I very much respect your opinion. What you just said, I think, is wonderfully enlightening information that I think if we gave people a chance over the next two months to hear those things, it will clear up a lot of the misconceptions. And I think that it's important that we give that information out. And I totally respect your opinion, believe me. But I think if we have a divisive issue now, we don't get a chance to educate over the next couple of months. That we would definitely have a forum for education. And what you just said was wonderful. And I'm guessing if people watched it, maybe they didn't have any idea what you just said that existed. Now they do. And maybe that understanding helps. And at the end of the day, we have a better community because of the understanding. So that's another point of taking this because of the debate that would happen in the education like you just gave us would be shared. So thank you very much for sharing it. I just wanted to say that.
Oh, did I get to reply, or was that...
Yeah, sure. Absolutely.
I appreciate your words. And believe me, Mr. Tennant, we do our best to shout this information from the rooftops every day we work, and people just don't want to hear it. People do respond more viscerally to fear than they do to the facts about this issue because this issue is so hard for anyone to talk about. And I would welcome any educational forum if and when this does go to the ballot. My fear, though, is that fear will win out over truth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. Okay. Who would like to address this next? Can I ask you all, if you're gonna speak to us tonight, would you start to line up at the podium, please? Or the amendments, just for the amendments? Do you want to wait till the ordinance? Yes, you may. Fayetteville residents will be first, okay? All right. All right. Who would like to come up next? Don't everybody be bashful. Looks like everybody, come on up.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. I am Joshua Crawford. I live at 1705 North Saying. And I would like to specifically talk about Amendments 1 and Amendments 3. Amendments 1, Amendment 1, I don't believe goes far enough. Yes, it does, it does, on the face of it, from what I could tell, protect the religious rights of the churches, but it does nothing to address the religious rights of the individuals in the churches who own businesses in Fayetteville. So I don't think it yet goes far enough. As far as Amendment 3, I'm against it also because I think it's merely giving political cover to those who would like to say, "I'm voting for this or against this, but I'm giving it to the people." I'd like to, I'd more like to see the alderman's votes on the ordinance itself without that particular amendment. If it passes or fails, the, you know, we can get 5,000 signatures and get it on the ballot. That's not gonna be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay. Yes, I'm sorry, Al.
I had a question, if I could. You said that you didn't think one of the amendments went far enough.
Amendment 1.
Which, which one of them?
Amendment...
Okay, you're the one about the churches.
Yes. It protects the churches, but it doesn't protect the religious liberties of the individuals in the churches who own businesses in Fayetteville.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Laura Hampton. I live at 920 North Leopard Avenue in Fayetteville, number 824. And I would like to talk about the amendments, specifically Mr. Petty's. And I would very much like to thank all of you for considering these things. I do feel like that it clears up a tremendous amount of misinformation that has been spread about this issue, and it's very well put. Something that I think people are forgetting about this is this doesn't just affect the LGBT community. This also affects other groups of people, specifically the disabled, people of color. And I think that's something that is being forgotten in this. And his amendments do not address that, but I felt like it was important to mention that. I would also like to echo what the first speaker said about Mr. Tennant's amendment in that I don't believe that this should be put to a public vote. I'm just a regular person. I don't know a lot about how these things work, but I'm not really familiar with any time that public safety has ever been considered optional. And that's really what this feels like. So I would very much urge you to... I need words now to have them. Sorry. I very much disagree with his amendments, but I'm pleased that this is even being discussed because it needs it. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. Mayor Jordan, thank you for attending the Veterans Memorial Service last. I appreciate that. I've been a resident of Fayetteville since I got out of the active service in May of ninety. I live, I'm registered to vote and have been for fifteen, the last fifteen years at thirteen fifty-two Van Duren Avenue in Fayetteville. I'd just like to say, please, vote no on this issue. If a no vote is, if it passes with a no vote, I guess it... So that was you need to stay with the amendments. The overall ordinance we'll talk about later. Right now, we're staying with the amendments. Are you familiar with the amendments?
Maybe not, every one of them.
Well, we're talking about the amendments right now. Yes, you do.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome.
My name is Jim Newberry. I live at sixteen fifty-eight North Willow Book Drive, Fayetteville, Arkansas. And Lionel, when you get over seventy, don't climb trees.
I don't climb trees.
I'm a living example of that right now. In reference to the Amendment one nineteen point eleven, that the mayor shall designate the civil rights administrator who shall administrate this chapter and be responsible for receiving, investigating, and counseling complaints filed under this chapter, I would like that not to be necessarily a singular designation, but a corporate designation reference. Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Jim. What we're trying to, what we're discussing right now is the amendments to the ordinance.
Is this not an amendment?
Well, I don't think it is. I think it's in the original ordinance.
Amendments must be proposed by the city council. There are three amendments on the floor right now to be discussed.
Okay, is the voting one of them?
Yes, voting is one of them.
Voting is one of them, and then the other one is designated...
I will address that then. I feel that your comments about taking this to a public vote are very, very good. I'm sorry, but I'm afraid I did not fully understand your comments. This thing has to pass to get voted on?
Right. What? Councilmember Tennant has proposed we'll replace the one that's, the other one.
Okay.
If it's passed by the council, and it will replace the first one. Is that fair statement, Kit?
That's correct. Instead of having an enacting ordinance, it would be a referring ordinance, refer to a vote instead of to enact it into law.
Okay.
But to get that far, we got to pass this amendment to get it there.
Okay, I'm sorry. I did not understand.
Well, it gets a little confusing at times.
Okay, well, I am confused.
Well, I...
Thank you.
You're very welcome, Jim. And you can comment on the ordinance as a whole later on, okay? Yes.
Good evening. My name is John Burnett. I live at forty-five ninety-seven East Davis, Fayetteville. I'm in the Vandergriff McNair School District. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your time this evening. Specifically, I'd like to comment on Mr. Tennant's amendment as far as the amendment that would put this to a vote. And basically, I hadn't heard about this thing. I spoke with Adella probably about four days ago, and she was somewhat incredulous to the fact that I hadn't heard about this ordinance as of yet. And so I spent the greater part of Saturday actually walking around in East Fayetteville, over by township, as far as in the neighborhoods, passing out flyers and actually speaking with the people that lived in those communities. And it speaks directly to this amendment. I would, I guess I would, if I were to guess, I would say probably one in twenty people that I spoke with were actually familiar with the civil rights ordinance that was going to be voted on. And the one out of twenty, the reason why was because someone had written an op-ed piece that Saturday morning that was published in the Gazette. And so I know you mentioned that there's been a lot of outcry, as of late especially. I would suggest that as of Saturday, no one I had spoken with, I spoke to a great deal of people, no one that I had spoken with had any idea that this ordinance was even going to be voted on, for whatever reason. I mean, there are a number of reasons. Also, I would like to say this as well. I spoke with Mr. Alan Long for probably twenty-five minutes on the telephone Sunday evening as well. And so just said, "Appreciate your time." And there was a comment that he made was that if this word to go to a vote, he was ninety-nine to a hundred percent sure that it would pass. And so I would say to anyone that is in favor of this particular ordinance, if you are that sure that it's going to pass, but there are so many people that are unaware of it, I can't understand why not take it to a vote and let democracy work and let the people have a say. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
My name's Joseph Collins. I live at one four three four North Lunsford. I'm resident of East Fayetteville. I believe that, I don't have any comments about the first two amendments. I think they're generally good and they clear up a lot of misconceptions. Sorry. I think that the first two amendments clear up a lot of misconceptions. As to the third amendment, Mr. Mayor, I believe it's punt. I think that we've already had our election. We have elected the city council, and to hand it back to us is, I wouldn't say inappropriate, but it's too time-consuming and it's kind of stringing us along. I mean, in the politest way possible. I don't mean to ramble, so I will just go and guess.
Thank you.
Well, my name is Jay Phillips, and my address is twenty fifty-five Klein, South Klein Avenue. I'm a lifetime resident of Fayetteville, class of ninety-six, Fayetteville High School. And I wanted to address Mr. Petty's proposed amendment in regard to the churches and church property, and I also wanted to address Mr. Tennant's concerning taking it to elections. First of all, when I was twenty years old, I got a nice job at a little mom-and-pop gas station in town that turned out to be a pop-and-pop gas station. And it was a nice job, but nonetheless, I was fired from that job because of my perceived sexual orientation. I was perceived to be straight, and I was too straight to work there. So that's a, this isn't just a minority issue here. That's a blade that can slice both ways. And either way you cut it, discrimination is wrong. It's just not right. We should all be treated the same, under the law. However, even as someone who has felt that sting, I have to say, first of all, Mr. Tennant, that I appreciate your conviction in wanting to take it to a vote. My only concern there is that historically, this nation does not have a very good track record with putting the rights of the minority up to a vote of the majority. And so even if we might end up, and we may well end up with a public vote for the ordinance, but just because there might be public, a majority of disapproval, doesn't mean that it is right. And secondly, Mr. Petty, I would like to say that I really appreciate your extension as an atheist of a good faith extension of the exemptions for religious, for churches and their properties. I don't personally agree, but I think as, from your point of view and from the city council's point of view, I think that is probably what is fairest and middle-of-the-road and meets the concerns of as many people as possible. My only, my closing comment was in like. I would hope that people in the religious community can also take a look at how much this is important for someone who's felt that in the other direction and knows plenty of people through housing, through employment, who have felt discrimination sting as it currently is legal in the city of Fayetteville. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Peter Tonason. I'm a resident of the city of Fayetteville. I live at thirty-five hundred Hearthstone Drive. I agree with the prior speaker that Mr. Petty's first amendment, I'm concerned for three reasons. One, I don't know enough about what property is or is not tax-exempt and whether the city can decide to tax certain property and therefore remove it from the protection of this amendment. And the reason I'm concerned about property is because in addition to the three rights that I'll speak about later in the First Amendment, the founding fathers wanted to protect our rights to property because that right to have property guarantees so many other rights that we have as Americans, so that we're not just tenant farmers on some English manor where the Lord rules our lives because we don't have the means to care for ourselves. And I believe that when a group of believers comes together and puts their tithes or their money and to buy assets that they share as a community of believers, that all that property and all that wealth should be protected from the power of the state. My second issue on the tax-exempt property is I agree with the prior speaker who said that the protection for religion goes beyond just protecting a church, an institution, or an association. It needs to protect individuals. And what I'd like to refer to briefly now is that there is an Arkansas law of civil rights, a Civil Rights Act from nineteen ninety-three, which was not mentioned in the memorandum and has not been mentioned in my practice, in my presence. But the exemption for religion there says religion means all aspects of religious belief...
Excuse me, just a minute. Would you all please close the door back there? There, now, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Religion means all aspects of religious belief, observance, and practice. The protection for freedom of religion is not a scrap that's left over when we get done legislating about other things. It has a dignity and a force and a region of its own that is protected. That's why religion is one of the classes protected by the highest of the three standards, which is kind of a joke now, but the three standards of constitutional protection, and that is strict scrutiny. So for the government to impose on someone's religion, they have to have a compelling governmental interest. They have to use the least intrusive means of regulating and impinging on that interest. And I think the exemption to date does not do that. In fact, the whole statute, I'll argue later, is a problem because it reverses the, it reverses the constitutional protection and stands it on its head. So I'm concerned about who gets to determine what's taxable and then the standard, which I believe should be broader and should protect individuals. On the, Mr. Petty's amendment with respect to bathrooms, two points. One, it ended with the phrase, quote, "for any unlawful purpose." And I'm not a very good listener. I mean, you could ask any of my ex-wives, and they'll tell you I'm not a good listener. I mean, I am a visual person. I need to see something. But to me, that's kind of circular because I thought the purpose of the ordinance was to make it lawful for certain people with gender issues to use whatever bathroom they chose. So that phrase bothers me. And also, in a larger sense, I think the concern of people that I've talked to in this community is not that we'd be able to punish people after something's happened in the bathroom, but that we maintain a certain level of simple decency and normalcy because our children use those bathrooms. I mean, I grew up in a world where my parents and their friends did not subject us, when we were kids, to all the issues of their sexuality. I mean, we just didn't have to deal with it. We were kids. We were dealing with kid things. And I think that's the problem. It may be sad that certain adults have issues that make them want to use a bathroom that isn't the one that they should be using under existing standards in law, but I think that should be clear. Finally, on the public referendum. I support the idea of a referendum. I don't know why this is being rushed through so much. Mr. Petty's memo that I saw was dated May twenty-fifth.
Give you remarks for me, please. Just...
All right, yes, sir.
Stay focused with me.
All right. That memo, though, was dated May twenty-fifth. And he wanted this ordinance brought before the council in July. So there was a delay there. Now suddenly, this thing has to be brought forward on a third vote. What it looks like to me, as someone who practiced law in Washington for five years and is a Washington-trained lawyer, is the kind of lobbying and legislation that goes through in the summertime when everybody else is away on vacation. And I also know from having researched this that there are a lot of these kinds of ordinances being submitted, say, in Montana right now, at least six. And the Judiciary Committee in Montana has just voted, it's not law yet, but they're going to take this up to the state level where I believe it belongs. But city councils are kind of the soft underbelly of democracy where you should be voting on things like Gully Park. And I agree with the comment Ms. Marsh made. We shouldn't rush into important decisions. Why is this being rushed? There were two little headlines, not headlines, there were two little stories in the Democrat Gazette announcing the first two meetings. Now, this one got the front page headlines. But why is this being rushed through? I'll talk more about the ordinance at large later. But the referendum, I'm now torn because if Mr. Tennant says we need to move this quickly to get it on a general election referendum, that says, "Go quickly." But on the other hand, I don't think any of this should be moving quickly. And my final point is, I think it should be voted on by a referendum, but I believe this ordinance is patently in violation of state law and violates the Constitution of the United States, and the fact that the people voted in won't save that.
We're going to get to the ordinance in a minute, okay?
I actually have, it's not really a question, but it's a comment of what you said, and I'm glad you said it. The reason I want to push this forward tonight is because if we don't, we'll miss the election schedule.
I understand that.
So if this was, yeah, this was March, then we could take an extra time to do it. Yeah, so, but I appreciate the, I appreciate the point.
My name is Nathan Sutherland Cordsmeier. I live at eight thirty-three South Curtis, Fayetteville, Arkansas. As far as the first two amendments go, I think it's sad that the clarification about the fact that indecent exposure would be a crime was necessary, but I understand why that had to be done. As far as the Third Amendment goes, I feel like it's a horrible idea because ending discrimination quickly is always a good thing. When I got my first job in Fayetteville, it was wonderful. And after a very brief period of time, when the manager found out I was a homosexual, I was very quickly treated differently from all of my coworkers. And eventually, I realized that I could not stay in that hostile environment, and I chose to quit. And then about a month and a half later, I finally got them to release my check to me. When my husband and I were married in February, we came back to our leasing office. We signed new leases so that they would be under the correct names. The woman that I had been renting from for five years left the office, and a new woman is in charge. And when they were trying to rent the apartment next to ours, she told me that she had been telling people about the very nice brothers who lived there. The idea that I could lose my home because someone finds out I'm gay is why we don't need to wait to put this up for the vote. We need to push it through as quickly as possible because people like me don't feel safe here. I'm living with a shadow over my head. And you're absolutely right that they will get 5,000 signatures, but I just listened to the city council spend 1.1 million dollars expanding a park. If we have to have a special election so that I can feel safe in my home and work environment, we should have the special election. Thank you.
My name is Alex Hickman. I live on the forty-three hundred block of West Chaparral Lane in Fayetteville. I would like some clarification on the First Amendment. I didn't quite understand the last about two or three sentences where it talks about tax-exempt properties. Is there any way I could get that reread? Is there any way I could get that reread?
Would you like to reread it?
Well, and let me explain one thing. A tax-exempt property is exempted by the county assessor's office. They're the ones that determine whether or not a piece of real property is tax exempt or not. They have various tests they look at. And, for example, some of the city's property is tax exempt, but not all of it, and that is probably true for churches and for other institutions. Most of church property is tax exempt. This particular proposal says nothing in this chapter, which means the Civil Rights Administration chapter. Shall be construed to require any religious or denominational institution or association to open its tax-exempt property or place of worship to any individual or group for any ceremony or meeting, except for any activity or service that is supported in whole or part by public funds.
Okay. What is the definition of public funds?
That would be some sort of tax funds.
Okay. So like if, if there was, you know, the city council voted on, yes, let's give X amount of dollars towards this event, then at that time, it can be deemed public?
If the, if the state or some other entity was, example, sending money to a church so that the church could put on a soup kitchen or something.
Okay.
And if the church accepted that money to help fund their church kitchen, then they would not be allowed to discriminate for people coming in.
For who's allowed to eat in the kitchen.
To get the soup.
Correct.
That's right.
Okay.
It would only open it up for that particular event. It wouldn't open it up always, but for that event, yes, they would not be able to be allowed to discriminate.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I am not a learned man. I will not begin to act like I'm a learned man. I am a, your average, everyday grunt. And in all honesty, I do not engage in democratic process 90% of the time, which that I am ashamed of. But this particular situation, I feel, is deemed as such. And, Mr. Jordan, I would like to say that of any time that any action that I could have ever taken as a Baptist Christian that could have been construed as hateful or fear mongering or any kind of hostility towards anybody that I disagree with, I will openly admit that I apologize for anything that could have been construed as that. And I hate the fact that we, as a society, have to take such drastic steps, that, that there feels to be a need for this. But I do agree with the Third Ordinance, or the amendment to the ordinance, I'm sorry, for us to have a public vote. If y'all remember historically, the times when people have been ostracized from their ability to voice their opinions and their rights has not met with very, very positive results. Anytime you try to silence a group of individuals, which I feel like this greatly does, it tends to create hostility. And whenever somebody fights back against that, it just escalates further and further and further. So I would like to publicly say I am not going to retaliate, regardless of whatever happened earlier today. Anybody who disagrees with me, feel free to do what you choose, but I will not publicly, privately, say anything against it. So thank you for, for listening to our concerns and our comments and hearing the voice of the people and proposing these, you know, first two amendments to this. I believe they are a good first step. Do I believe that it is enough? No. Do I agree with everything that's in the ordinance? No. But I do appreciate the fact that you're continuing, continuing the process instead of ostracizing key groups that have a legitimate concern for this. And I thank you, sorry, Jordan, I thank you to thank him. Um, I don't know, I'm not political. Um, but.
Just this one time.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry. But I'd like to thank you for wanting it to be a public, you know, a public response because apparently, the community very much wants it to be that way. So I appreciate both of you for looking at it and building this and making it into something that could possibly be a very good thing because discrimination is bad. Me being a minority, I prefer not to be discriminated against. So, you know, that is a good thing. But I believe the drastic actions that are being taken, even in amendments, or the amendments to this, still infringe on that. So I believe it is a good beginning step, but we shouldn't try to jump for the moon immediately. We should, one step at a time, build on it, not, let's try to, you know, eat the whole cow in one bite. So thank you. Do you all have any questions or comments, concerns for me?
I think you've covered it all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jay Parker. My address is 432 North Washington here in Fayetteville. Mr. Mayor, thank you, and Alderman, thank you for your time. To the first two amendments that Alderman Petty presented, I thank you for your efforts and the time that you've spent working on, on this issue and the clarification. I think it's unfortunate that we would have to clarify this issue about churches, and I have been fortunate to find a faith community that supports me, my partner, and our child here in Fayetteville. And I just appreciate your, your time and efforts in making those clarifications, even if I don't agree with them. As with the Third Amendment, I, I would like to say that sometimes it's the responsibility of our elected officials to point the way for the public. And this is one of those instances where you are guiding the public and, and helping the public in coming to a new realization of equality. I, I also want to say that when we moved here, I had a real fear of not being able to find a home because we were selling a home in our former state. And when I took a job at the university here, we didn't know if the house was going to sell. And in trying to find a property, we were concerned that if a person found out we were gay, they would not lease to us. And this law protects our rights in, in that effect. And so if you've ever been afraid of not being able to find a home when you're trying to move to a new job, you would, you would not have questions about this. With regard to Amendment Number Three, I, I think that it is important that, that you move forward on this decision, and if there is enough outcry against this, let them garner the vote, the ballot signatures and bring it to a special election. As was previously said, if it's that important, then protect it. Pay for a special election. Sometimes democracy is not cheap, and sometimes democracy isn't the most efficient way, but it is the best way. So I appreciate your time. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is John Latour. I live just west of Razorback Stadium, 410 North Oliver. I rise in support of all three amendments. Mr. Petty, I believe that the first two amendments were good faith efforts to reconcile these two vastly different positions, and we surely appreciate as far as they go. Mr. Tennant, from your testimony, excuse me, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, from Mr. Tennant's testimony, we understand that this has touched a deep emotion on both sides, and those sort of issues need to be decided through a public vote so that each side can fully express themselves. Or the city council to take upon itself, such an emotional issue may leave one side or the other feeling very short-changed. The democratic process avoids that shortfall. So I strongly support Mr. Tennant's Third Amendment.
My name is Gladys Tiffany. I live at 105 North Willow in Fayetteville. I want to really thank the, the mayor and the city council for your determination and your, the clarity of your vision in bringing this to us. I have a whole lot of things I wanted to say, but I'm going to make it short. I really want to address Amendment Three because I do think that there are very real reasons why this debate cannot be silenced. And even if it is passed tonight, it's not going to go away, and the, this will not be the end of this discussion. And if it were, that would be a very bad thing for Fayetteville. This is a conversation that needs to happen among us and go on for a long time because there are so many issues that are not addressed, that need to be discussed and need to be clarified and need to be codified in a way that we can make our people more free, more just, more equal, and we can care for one another in this very important city. So I'm, I'm speaking to the issue as, in support because I do feel like we're ready. Fayetteville is ready. We're ready to take this vote, to welcome the people who come to us in a caring manner, and continue the conversation because we want to. This is, this is clearly important, and this is something that's valuable for us.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Caitlin, and I live in Ward Three. First, I want to stay, state that identifying myself as a transgender woman is very difficult and, in my opinion, very unfair because I have to openly discuss that in front of everyone. And with the potential of giving my address, that's scary, and I don't want to be faced with discrimination. So with your permission, can I omit that information?
Let's start the council on that.
She said Ward Three, that's fine.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say thank you all for considering everyone's voice. It's very important to me, and I'm sure everyone here. I support the first two amendments from Matthew Petty. However, I do not support the Third Amendment to put this up, the ordinance up to a public vote because I don't agree with the statement about giving the public time to educate themselves. We have many, many organizations out there trying to educate people hand and foot about transgender and LGBT issues. Sadly, the architects of misinformation have always had more resources to reach the general public, and those being discriminated live against fear, which makes it hard for them to come forward and make a voice. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jeremy Flanagan. I live on the 1700 block of North Cannondale in Fayetteville. I, I will not speak near as long as I did last time, two weeks ago. I didn't know if anyone else knew about this, and I wanted to go chapter and, and section through the code on the things that I felt clearly violated our First Amendment rights. And it was agreed upon, and some of those things were removed. It bothers me that it started with the knowledge and the intent to take away some of our First Amendment rights. It makes it very difficult for me to trust anything from that standpoint. If somebody put forward legislation to take away other First Amendment rights of individuals and then started removing some of those, like the First Amendment that we have here, that's, that's a nice thing, but when you take away certain First Amendment rights just to give some of them back, it doesn't instill a lot of confidence. One of the things on the, on the First Amendment, I, I appreciate the spirit of it. I do. However, I feel that if the intent was to not, well, if the intent was to exempt churches or religious institutions, associations, or the religious convictions of individuals altogether, it could have been done with a blanket exemption, as has been done with others in this ordinance. And, and so still, every time that we are giving some back, that's receiving things back of things that were intended to be taken away in the first place, which I don't believe the First Amendment of the Constitution allows anybody to do. And so, and so I, I appreciate the spirit of it. However, it's still, again, just giving back more and giving back more, but that's only after having taken some First Amendment rights away. And so, on the Second Amendment, I will not address anyone personally. However, I'm quite certain that those in the community, those here tonight, some who have spoken, some in, in this room, to the body I'm speaking to, others in, holding office, have mentioned fear mongering, have mentioned the misinformation, have mentioned those things. And it goes back to the issue that I brought up last time about my concerns about gender identity. I, I don't see, and I've asked this question multiple places. I've asked this question and sent it to some of our Aldermen. Myself and Alderman Long have, have gone back and forth a lot and talked. I appreciate him. Others have as well. I think that's a good sign of an Alderman that listens and talks even when you disagree. And so, one of my questions is how that sexual orientation and gender expression don't provide the employment and the housing protections that are purported to be the purpose of this ordinance? Gender identity seems to me to be primarily about the public use spaces. One of the things that, that people are continuing to say tonight is that it's an issue of fear to bring up actual concerns of cases where individuals have used ordinance like this to gain access. The amendment, again, and the lawyer earlier spoke and mentioned that it's saying that it is illegal to use this ordinance with the intent to do something illegal. And that's my layman's term, short way of looking at it, that if you intend to enter a, a women's locker room at Planet Fitness or Fayetteville Athletic Club, and your intent is to do something illegal, then it's wrong. There are many cases, and, and I'm not going to, to share all of them, in the last couple of years across the country, you know, an issue where a man in, I believe it was in Georgia, who, he had a long history of public indecency and dressed, you know, in women's clothing. He didn't have a gender identity issue himself. That's what I, I said, the person who truly is struggling, you know, with a gender identity issue, if they're still questioning or if they've already made that decision, they, I'm, I'm not concerned about them. They are doing what they feel is right in their heart. But there are people who will use any loophole in any law to do what is not right. And so you will have individuals who feign gender identity, who feign being transgender and who will use this to enter a place. This man in Georgia who entered a, a women's restroom and no one stopped him because it was, you know, to where that had to be allowed and then began exposing himself. Well, it's illegal to enter there if you plan to do something illegal, but the fact is, he already exposed himself to multiple kids, multiple girls, in the bathroom before someone could then act, or acting after the fact. I do very much appreciate the, the person who started us off and talked about the Rape Crisis Center. It is, and I was actually going to mention some of those things, that the LGBT community suffers sexual assault far greater than the heterosexual community. And transgender at, at the top of that list, much more than, than the others, than the others within that community. But that still doesn't take away the fact that people can use this to gain access. Yes, it's still illegal to expose yourself to someone when it's indecent. Now, however, in, at, at a college in Olympia, Washington, they're dealing with a case right now with a 45-year-old man who is transgender, but who walks around changing in a women's locker room because it's a, it's a women's locker room, and he is transgender, but he is there with, you know, everything exposed around kids as young as six years old.
That would be illegal, if I understand, even if this passes, isn't that correct? Kit, that's against.
In Arkansas, it'd be illegal.
Yes.
It would be illegal for a transgender person protected under gender identity, he's not exposing himself with the intent, he's not exposing himself with the intent to gain a rise out of it. He is just simply a man who is transgender, he is a man biologically at the time, who is transgender, who goes and is now protected by gender identity, which is a protected class, and he goes into that locker room and unrobes.
Hang on just a minute. I believe the city attorney sent us a wonderful memo just on the laws.
Well, I, I still think that he probably would be guilty of disorderly conduct, which can occur if a person, quote, recklessly creates a risk of public inconvenience, annoyance or alarm, he or she in a public place exposes his or her private parts. Regardless of why he's doing it, if it causes this reckless, if he recklessly causes this risk of public inconvenience and alarm, then he could very well be guilty of disorderly conduct. And I think, I don't know if you were here when the police chief agreed that in that kind of circumstance, he would be arrested.
Just one.
I, I did, but my question is, how is it, if we give him gender identity status, protected status, and he disrobes in a women's locker room, how is that reckless when he is simply living with, underneath the protected status we've given him?
Because state law, from what I understand.
Well, the fact is, the state law is, of course, much superior than the ordinance that we're looking at right now. And basically, state law can just ignore any city ordinance because it's, it's above us. We can't pass any ordinance that would affect the state law.
Okay.
And so he could not use a city ordinance in order to do a defense to a state law claim.
Okay. I understand that there is still the, the issues of, you know, public changing. I understand that there is still the issues of, you know, public changing areas. There are cases in Los Angeles where a man who feigned gender identity, he was not a transgender or the LGBT community, but used that to, over a long period of time, continually gain access to women's changing rooms and taped them. And once again, yes, if you tape someone, if you take a picture of them, it is unlawful. But my problem has always been that we are inviting that person into that previously protected area and then we're asking them not to commit the crime. You're asking a person to do that. I have someone very close in my family who has been raped. I have, I have, you know, people that I have to counsel that have gone through different types of sexual assault. If you, you know, drive by while the U of A band is practicing out on MLK and see the number of individuals who sit in trucks and leer at them, you can talk to U of A band members and ask, you know, how real of a thing that is. And instead of them being, you know, in a public area and who are, you know, fully clothed, where now that person can, unless they do something illegal, unless they do something illegal, gain access to a private place. And that just concerns me. It's something I don't think that is fear mongering. It's not just mere misinformation. It is a real thing that, you know, that it's just a choice this body will have to make. And so on the Third Amendment, well, on the Second Amendment, I just don't feel that, and I would love clarification on why gender identity is needed to protect employment and housing discrimination where sexual orientation and gender expression don't. I would love to hear that. The gentleman who was fired from his job at a pop and pop shop, sexual orientation would protect them. The people who have expressed issues about housing, I believe sexual orientation or gender expression would protect them. And so we're adding this one extra thing that is causing a lot of the issue. And people can dismiss it if they want, people can try and pretend that people won't use the law to provide cover. I just don't think that's real. And so I've expressed that to different people, that I felt that they could have come up with something that didn't cause all of these issues as well. To the Third Amendment, and I would love clarification on that if some, and I know you don't have to give it, but I would love to hear how gender identity is necessary and covers things that express gender expression and sexual orientation do not. And then lastly, and I would love to hear that from either the council or the city attorney's office and not necessarily people like me out here. Lastly, on the amendment to have a vote, again, I'm torn because as a whole, I think we should have started from a different base on creating an anti-discrimination legislation. It's very difficult for me to trust that this legislation still doesn't have things that I'm not seeing because it started from a bad basis. So it's hard for me to want to approve it to then get to vote on it. However, I do appreciate the sentiment of, this is a, this will come to a vote, whether it's approved by this council or not. I feel whether it was approved tonight or if it was defeated tonight, I think it's going to come to a vote. I think that either side is going to rally around and push this to a voter referendum. I truly do. And so, anyway, and so I'm torn on that, but I appreciate the sentiment.
Thank you.
My name is Lance Reed. I'm with at 1238 51st Avenue. Dr. Martin Luther King stated so eloquently that freedom is never voluntary by the oppressor, but he must, the oppressor, they must take it from the oppressor. I am standing in opposition of Amendment Three. Basically, as an African-American male, never has any type of discrimination legislation has been passed in the South as regards to discrimination. And the same individuals that are oppressing now are doing the same thing that they did in the civil rights movement, going on the First Amendment of freedom of religion. They use slavery, slaves obey your masters, as a tactic to keep oppression for African-American men and women and different women of color. So therefore, I'm standing in opposition because here now, we still are in the South. We still have African-Americans in this great city of Fayetteville that are still discriminated against. Myself was discriminated against at my job and I ultimately had to leave and had no ramifications or any where we'll fall to go and get help. So therefore, I'm kind of saddened that the only issue that is being made headways would be of the LGBT community or anyone that of gender identity. I'm standing in support of African-Americans. If this is passed or, and it takes to a vote, what message does that send to the African-American community about Fayetteville and how they treat African-Americans in this city? How are they welcoming of African-Americans, of people of color that will come in and how it will cloud a national attention that Fayetteville is not welcoming of African-Americans, but only welcoming of those who agree and think like them? So I stand in opposition of Amendment Three because African-American people have a track record in the South that it is not a welcoming place for African-Americans.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lorenz Sakarov. I live at 420 East Rebecca Street in Fayetteville. I also teach law at the law school. I teach criminal law, but I also study constitutional law and I'm interested in all kinds of law. And I want to speak in favor of, well, I'm not going to speak, I'm in favor of the underlying ordinance, but I'm against Amendment Three. And the reason I'm against Amendment Three is that the one time in which democracy fails us throughout history is when the rights of minorities are at issue. And every single Supreme Court case that has addressed when the limits of democracy kick in based on the Bill of Rights, addressed in one way or another, that problem. And every political scientist is always grappling with that problem. The problem with democracy is always going to be minorities. And so it's, I love democracy, just like the next person, maybe slightly less, but it's just not a perfect system. And so when you send it, a referendum like this to the people, it sounds wonderful. Of course, we want the people to speak and I'm extremely sympathetic to that. And it's wonderful when states pass gay rights, gay marriage laws. It's stronger because they've done so. So there's a lot to be said for that. But the problem remains that insular minorities that have been traditionally discriminated against face terrible odds when it comes to democracy. And gay people in particular, and lesbian people in particular throughout the country, not just in the South. The North has its share of discrimination too and has its share of laws. And all discrimination is done through democracy. That's how discrimination happens. And so I would just urge the council members who are in favor, if you're in favor of the underlying ordinance, vote for that ordinance. Vote against discrimination because that's what you believe. And if the people who are against this ordinance and want to protect, you know, some of them have great motives and some less great motives, let's put the burden on them to pass a referendum to, that's anti-minority and where minorities have traditionally lost. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is David Garcia and I live at 252 Thompson, Ward Two, here in Fayetteville. And I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and all those people sitting around you for your work here tonight and for taking the time to listen to everybody. And I have to say that I appreciate council member Tennant's concerns about the democratic process, but I have to tell you, Mr. Mayor, that with all due respect, I disagree in this case because I think the democratic process is actually in play right now, that we are a representative form of government and the people that I'm standing here looking at have been elected as the representatives of the people. And that there comes a time when, as our representatives, you each need to make an individual ethical, moral decision, a choice, on where you stand as the representative of Fayetteville. And why is that important? Before I moved down here, I had two sisters living here, they invited me to come down and one of them wanted me to help her in her business. And my first question is, I've never lived in the South, how am I going to be received down there? And their response was, no, you'll be fine. And for the most part, I was. Most of Fayetteville is overwhelming and overwhelmingly positive and welcoming. I have faced discrimination here, personal discrimination, and, but it's been small and limited. But when, as the representatives of the city of Fayetteville, you say, we are taking a stand against discrimination of all kinds, you are sending a powerful message. You have taken an ethical and moral stand on behalf of all of us. Now, of course, it doesn't stop there. The democratic process will continue to play out. And I agree with those who say that probably whichever way the vote goes tonight, the people will attempt to take it to a referendum. And if they do, that is the democratic process, the way it is established here in the city of Fayetteville. And on LGBTQ issues, we have seen that in play before and it worked just fine. So I think we're engaged in the democratic process. I think that democratic process has served the city well. And I really do believe each and every one of you has to make a decision about where you stand as our representatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Good evening, Mayor Jordan. My name is Janice Walters.
I don't know if they can hear you. I don't, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Janice Walters. I live in South Fayetteville on West 24th Street in Ward One. Because of security reasons, I prefer not to give my street address.
Be fine.
Thank you. A couple of issues on, and I appreciate Mr. Petty bringing those amendments, trying to clarify some issues that seem to be controversial and people have some strong feelings on. And I appreciate him trying to clarify those. And I just had a little question in my mind about the Second Amendment. From what I understand, if it's criminal intent, if you go into the wrong restroom with criminal intent, that is against the law. I mean, it should be. If you go into the restroom, as I do frequently, for normal purposes, according to this amendment, I would not be breaking the law. Is that correct?
If there's no disorderly conduct or anything going on, that is correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. The first speaker that came up talked about some statistics and I wanted to just elaborate just a little bit more on that. Transgender individuals make up one to one and a half percent of the world population. But they're about 400 times more likely to be assaulted or murdered than the rest of the general population. These crimes are more likely to be violent hate crimes, as we've seen numerous times here in our country. Recent statistics in 2014, released in May of 2014, indicate that a transgender person is reported murdered every 38 hours. Fortunately, to my knowledge, that has not happened in our great city of Fayetteville. I pray that it never does. I'm in favor of both amendments that Mr. Petty brought forth in bringing those clarifications. I am opposed to the Third Amendment from Mr. Tennant. As has been stated by several other people, I think that we elect our council members for the purpose of deciding city issues. This is one issue where I think the city council should step forward and make the right decision for all the citizens of Fayetteville, to be fair to all the citizens, to be compassionate to all the citizens of Fayetteville. And I appreciate all the work that all the council members do and you too, Mr. Mayor. If, in fact, this comes to a referendum and to a vote, then we may need to have a special election. I agree with that. But I think at this point, we've all been expecting this to be voted on tonight. I think it should be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have one other question, clarification on 11902 on the definitions. I'm not familiar with democratic process. If there's a question on the wording there, can that be addressed by the public or do I need to bring that up to my council members first?
Yeah, the amendments that to be proposed must be proposed by the city council or the mayor. The public cannot really propose amendments. Only members of the, the elected members of this body can.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Houston Hughes and I stand, oh, I live at 888 West Lawson Street here in Fayetteville. And I stand in opposition to the First and Third Amendments and wish to make comment on the Second one. As to the First Amendment offered by Mr. Petty, according to the majority opinion in the Waltz decision by the Supreme Court in the 1970s, the reason that churches are tax exempt is because certain entities, sorry, this is a quote from that, quote, "Certain entities that exist, exist in a harmonious relationship with the community at large and foster its moral or mental improvement and should not be inhibited in their activities by property taxation or the fear of loss of property due to taxation." End quote. It seems clear that while some churches are open and accepting of all of our citizens in this city and are therefore existing harmoniously with our community, a church or other nonprofit community which would discriminate against an individual based on the things we are discussing today would not be considered in harmony with the community. Therefore, I urge you to vote no on that amendment. As to the Second Amendment, I would like to make the comment that there has, there have been a number of isolated incidents spoken about in regards to individuals and bathrooms. And I do not believe there has been, there are any statistics which would indicate that there have been more cases of indecent exposure or serial assault in communities which have passed equality ordinances like the ones we're considering now. These kinds of ordinances have been passed not only in other cities, but in other states. And in none of those states do there exist any statistics which seem to show an increase in sexual assault. Finally, as to the Third Amendment, I would like to disagree with that amendment to put this to a vote. We elected you all with the faith that it would be your job to educate yourselves as thoroughly as possible, not only on the laws that came up for a vote, but on the needs of your citizens and on where this city should be moving forward. You all are privy to more information than anyone else in this room as far as where our city is heading and what the heart of this city is. And because of that, you have an obligation to show us what you think about these things. And it seems, to me at least, that putting this to a vote is very easy. It's very easy to say, yes, let's push this outward to the citizens. It's significantly harder to take a stand yourself and say yes or no on this amendment. And I ask that you fulfill your obligation to us and make a straight yes or no vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Josh McFadden. I'm a resident of Ward Four here in Fayetteville. I also practice law here in Arkansas, in Fayetteville. Want to address the Amendments One and Three in particular. With respect to Amendment One, I think that it's a good step in the right direction. Unfortunately, the overarching ordinance is so broad and vague, I don't think this fixes the entire problem. Anytime you have an ordinance that is so sweeping as this one and affects religious liberty, I think that the council really needs to take a step back and wonder about the implications of the ordinance rather than just doing a piecemeal fix, which I think this is a good fix for portion of the overarching problems with the ordinance, but doesn't fix it at all in its general scope. I don't believe that any person who has an honest religious conviction should be forced to participate in a ceremony or other activity that is in direct violation of their faith. Does that mean that a person shouldn't be allowed to go into your neighborhood store and buy a Coke? No, I don't-- No, I don't think that's the issue here. But do I think that a person should be obligated to participate in a wedding ceremony for a same-sex marriage that they have a religious opposition to? I don't believe that's appropriate. I don't think that we should be, as a community, enforce certain religious groups to violate their conscience and their faith, to not only live and let live, but to participate in an activity that they find objectionable according to their religious faith. That's my primary issue with the sweeping language of this ordinance. And because of that, because of the dividing of our community on this issue in particular, I believe that Amendment 3 is very appropriate. I think this matter should be sent to the people. It's the people who are going to be put underneath the restrictions and requirements of this ordinance, and therefore, the people should vote on it. We should have a say. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Amanda Kucherovski. I live at 650 West Center Street here in Fayetteville. I want to speak just to, in support of Amendment 2. There were, was a comment made earlier that included just one single man in, say, Georgia. And so, what I really want to say is, to dismiss this ordinance because a couple of men dressed like women to perpetrate their sex crimes is the same as dismissing the legalization of alcohol, because 85% of rapes involve alcohol, and many perpetrators legally buy a drink for their target. This logic does not stand, and that's why I'm in support of Amendment 2. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Fernando Garcia. I live over by Wilson Park on Adams Street. I'm here to speak out against Amendment 3. I think the decision needs to be made tonight. During the civil rights movement, there was always saying tonight's not, or right now's not the right moment to do this. And I think this is what Amendment is doing. I think it's always the right time to demand justice. I think it's always the right time to demand equality, and it's always the right time to end discrimination. I think that this, we are behind on this. And I think by approving this, and I ask the city council to vote in favor of the ordinance and against Amendment 2, because as somebody who has faced discrimination personally, I can't wait, I can't wait any longer. I can't keep being discriminated. I need some protection to prevent that. And I think waiting till November is the wrong decision, especially since people of color, especially since the LGBTQ community make up the minority of the population. And I think the majority is going to be deciding on the fate of minority populations. And I know, I'm looking up and I'm seeing, I'm the minority in the room, and I'm putting my faith in the majority, but at least I get a chance to express myself here. If it does go to a vote in November, I just have one vote. At least here, I get a chance to talk to the eight people, nine if it's a tie, who are going to make a decision on this. So I urge you to vote against Amendment 3.
All right. Thank you, Fernando.
Hi. My name is Allison Williams. I live at 134 South Locust. I was born here in Fayetteville. I went to school here in Fayetteville. I own a retail business here in Fayetteville. And I'd like to speak to Amendment 3. This is very much a civil rights issue. I think that's been made really clear. A lot of the tactics that are being used by the opposition, the kind of fear mongering, are very similar to tactics that were used to try and keep America racially segregated in the 50s and 60s. And I think that it's pretty clear that if the Civil Rights Act had been put to a vote, it might not have passed. America might still be racially segregated. So I do not believe that putting this to a vote is the right thing to do at this time. We need to take stand. We need to stand up for tolerance and diversity and equal rights for everyone. So I would really urge you to safeguard the rights of all of our citizens. That's what we've elected you to do, and that's what we trust you to do, safeguard the rights of our most vulnerable minorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hello, everybody. I'm back again. My name is Anne Hannah Newell, and I'm here to speak for Amendment 3. I think that's the perfect choice for a democratic venue, because we're not ever going to really agree here, I don't think. So I won't waste your time. I'm just asking you all to please let the people of Fayetteville decide on this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Abigail Letzinger. I live at the corner of Maple and Highland. I prefer, as I live alone, not to give everyone the exact address. I hope that's okay. I moved to Fayetteville about nine months ago, and I'm originally from outside Chicago. And what drew me to Fayetteville was, having never even really visited the South, it seemed very open and inclusive. That's why I chose to uproot my life and move here. I would like to speak, if possible, to Amendments 1 and 3. First of all, Mr. Petty, thank you very much for your work on those amendments. There is a lot of talk surrounding Amendment 1 about religious liberty, and I would just like to remind us, Galatians 3:28, it says, "There is neither Greek nor Jew, neither slave nor free, no male and female, for we are all one in Christ Jesus." I believe that your good faith effort on Amendment 1 covers a myriad of things. I think that there are always ways that things can be misconstrued, but I stand in full support of Amendment 1, knowing that it is going to be up to individuals and their religious organizations. And while I might not necessarily agree with the decisions they make, they are their decisions. As far as Amendment 3 goes, I wasn't going to talk to this, but the more I heard people, the more I thought I should say something. There's a lot of concern around this just being about the LGBT community and putting it to a vote, but this is, at its whole, at its core, a full anti-discrimination ordinance. And I don't think that we would let the public vote on whether or not you could be fired for the color of your skin, or if you were in a wheelchair. To me, these are the same thing. So I am here urging you, please, don't let the public vote on this. This is not something that should be voted on. These are civil rights. These are human rights, and we are all God's children, and we are all equal in the eyes of God. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City of Fayetteville council members. My name is Teresa Turk. I live at 1408 West Cleveland, and I've lived collectively here about 11 years. I think Fayetteville is an awesome place to live, and I've lived a lot of different places. And I came back here because of the great spirit of friendliness, the funky flavor and the diversity of thought. But now, tonight, we're presented with this issue about anti-discrimination, and I urge you to reject Amendment 3 and actually make a decision tonight. Vote for equality. Vote for the ordinance. Do the right thing. This is long overdue. Do not put this up to a vote. Every time it's put up to a vote, the worst part of human nature unfortunately seems to come out. And this is what you all are hired to do. You're hired to actually make these kinds of tough decisions at the city council level. Do not let this drag on. Please, just make the right decision, reject Amendment 3, and vote for the ordinance tonight. Keep Fayetteville a really awesome, great place to live, and revalidate my decision to move back here to the South. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question. Teresa, thank you for being here. I appreciate it. I just have a question. On Amendment 1 and 2, how did you feel about those?
I feel like those are fine amendments to include.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. It's Michael Collins. The last time I gave my address, I almost didn't make it this morning because my tires were slashed by somebody. I live on Giles Road in Fayetteville, and I would like to speak about these amendments. The Second Amendment is, again, something that we need to reject because it, in amending what you prefer to allow a church to do, you still hold that you have the authority over that, you do not. The United States Constitution, the First Amendment, holds a greater authority than you, and the Second, in the Arkansas Constitution also has greater authority than this House and so, and this council. So I would say no on the Amendment Number 2, particularly because other things were added, like tax exempt status, receiving public funds, and again, the word "public accommodations." It seemed like it might cover, it seemed like it was a, you know, a conciliatory effort, but I heard new wording in it. And so now I have to hear it clearly again and examine it again. It just sounded like it, it sounded like we wanted to give you more clarification, and it ended up having more strings attached. And again, I'm uncomfortable with that because, again, I am an individual man of faith, and so my individual and personal decisions, both in my private life, my public life, and in business, all should be covered by the rights of conscience that are described in the, in the Arkansas Constitution. So I'm not comfortable with the First Amendment's. I would like some clarification, Mayor. When you say, I read the wonderful letter about being polite and nice and all that stuff, and I appreciate that. That'll be a good, that'll be a good experience here. Does that include being called a fear monger when we have facts?
I don't like the name "call."
Can we eliminate the word "fear monger" from now on?
I will eliminate the word "fear monger."
I would appreciate that because
I will do that.
We're not fear mongering. We're actually distributing information.
I've heard that used about three times tonight, and I
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, very much. Like, for instance, this man right here, Christopher Hambrook.
Oh, okay.
Christopher Hambrook actually did violate a five-year-old girl using Toby's Law. Now, it didn't happen to be here. I heard somebody say he has to be in Fayetteville before it counts. Believe me, Mr. Mayor, it counted to that five-year-old girl, even though he was in Toronto. I have an extra copy, if you'd like to pass it through. I didn't submit it at 9:00, so I don't expect you to see it.
Are you saying that occurred in Fayetteville?
This occurred in Toronto, under Toby's Law, which added gender exemptions sort of like this 119 does, right here. And so, this is a very real man who violated four women, gaining access to women's shelters under the Toby's Law, which they're now reconsidering because of the damage. And, Mr. Mayor, I think you could all agree that one time is not a statistic for a five-year-old girl to live with for the rest of her life because of a law that allowed a man to sneak in under this exemption and harm her, and a deaf woman, another 50-year-old woman, somebody else as well in those women's shelters. So I'm not fear mongering. I'm talking about this man, Christopher Hambrook.
We'll be sure we don't use that word.
Thank you very much. I'm also, you know, the transgender that was in Olympia, Washington, is currently protected. "The college has to follow state law," is the quote from the college. Even though the college shares this with the Capitol High Swim Club and the Children's Swim Club in the area that we mentioned earlier, the college is not doing anything about that. The college is saying, we are following state law, and the state law has been amended. Since our state law has some very clear violations against this, I would, you know, against anyone exposing themselves in public anyway, if it is going to cause alarm. Mr. Mayor, the number of people that were here
Stay with me.
At the last time and here tonight, they, these people will be alarmed if they see nudity in a bathroom that doesn't belong to the gender they expect, under just a reasonable rule of privacy to be there. And so, this violates what the memo that Kit put out earlier about trying to comfort me about the bathroom. His memo actually reaffirmed that a business owner has zero rights to control a transgender who looks like the opposite gender. Only transgenders who do not go in there. And so, that amendment about the bathroom issue is not fear mongering. It's not intolerance. It's actual legitimate facts. And lastly, I've got Jason Parmare. Jason Parmare was found in Macy's, and again, it's in Los Angeles, but I don't think it, you know, it shouldn't matter that they're over there, because we haven't done it here yet. But he was in a Macy's store, he was in the dressing room as a transgender female, and he was caught videotaping hours and hours and hours of women who unwittingly were undressing in there. And this is real. This happened here. I've got the documentation, if you'd like to see it at some point. You know, I can introduce you to these people. And so, the First and Second Amendments, I'm not comfortable with at all, by any means. First, for the breach of authority that you don't have in order to grant exemptions. And secondly, because the, they are our people doing this, and if it was my five-year-old girl, I wouldn't feel comfortable with the words practically doesn't happen, or hardly ever happens. I would be wounded for the rest of my life, along with my daughter. And that's a very real fear, Mr. Mayor. I'm not just... Also, on the Third, I have not seen so many people who seem to be for civil rights vote against having people having a vote on an issue before. It's kind of amazing to me. I would implore you to pass Amendment 3 and put the vote to the people. Now, in that, I would like to mention that a lot of people did say, we are representative republic, and that is true, and that we have cast a lot of care and concern in you in order to make these decisions in your, in your position, Mr. Mayor, and your, the council here. However, we do that with the trust that you won't usurp the authority and that you will also promote the morals of the culture and the community. What we see here is a rift between the definition of morals, and I'll get into more of that later. And so, what we're seeing here is, in our opinion, on our side, is a breach of trust in that representative republic, and we see a, what we view as a minority that is usurping the law in order to railroad us. And that's why we are not comfortable with this representation, having a vote on this issue without our direct say in the ballot. And, you know, our next opportunity to have any influence on this is this election with only a handful of council people, and then, of course, two years later. And that's, that's a long time for this bill to cost us a lot of lawsuits and headaches. And lastly, there's been a lot of fun scripture thrown around, and I'd like to clarify something about, specifically about slavery. They said that the good book has been used to justify slavery, when the good book has a death penalty on slavery. That's Exodus 21:6 and Deuteronomy 24:7. And it has continued to be condemned in 1 Timothy 1:10 with kidnappers of men, which is the exact colonial style of slavery at the time.
Please, Mr. Collins, please stay with the amendments, please.
All right. I would just like to say that
And I mean, you're going to be able to comment on the
Yes, sir, I will. I will. I appreciate that. But we who believe in the full counsel of scripture will also want Amendment 3 to go through so that we can have a say on it directly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Mayor, men and women of the city council, let me be brief. I was born here. I was raised here. My name is Justin Fletcher. I live at 193 West 29th Court in Fayetteville. I can tell you that Fayetteville has always been an inclusive community, that this ordinance as written speaks to those values. I think neither Amendment 1 or 2 are necessary, as the sentiments of each are clear in the original text of the ordinance. I find it especially troubling that there is apparently a need for anti-discriminatory protections to be explicitly distinguished from criminal behavior. But I have no objections to Amendments 1 or 2. There's no harm in gilding the lily. However, I must object to Amendment 3. The developments of the past few weeks and the stories presented here tonight clearly show that there is a need for this ordinance, and when civil rights action is needed, it is needed immediately. Laws are needed now. A champion that addresses such injustices that take place outside of the public eye is needed now. Security and dignity are not things that anyone should have to wait for, and anyone who needs or has needed this protection should wait no longer. The only election necessary is the one that has already taken place. Each one of you asked to be a leader of this community, to tackle the tough issues. The people of Fayetteville agreed because we trusted you could handle that job. Show us you were right. Lead. Even if the ordinance eventually goes to a general vote, and that is by no means a foregone conclusion, then you will have sent a clear message of acceptance to all residents. Fayetteville is my home, my hometown. I was raised here, and my children are being raised here. I want them to know that in Fayetteville, everyone can be different while being treated exactly the same, that the only thing that we will not tolerate is discrimination. Vote yes for 119. Vote now, tonight. Thank you.
We'll be having more comments on the ordinance as a whole.